And let's get started. Good evening. So let's stand and join in prayer for Mr. Lester's prayer.
Thank you. Will you join me in prayer? Creator God, as spring bursts on the eastern shore, we give you thanks for the bounty of the land and the surrounding waters. We give you thanks for the beauty of this place and for the work of our farmers who cultivate the land and the water new harvest the waters. Guide us to be better stewards of your creation in this special and distinctive rural place. Guide to our deliberations this evening as we lead your people in Talbot County. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. Now we'll do the pledge of allegiance of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good job, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Lester, for that heartwarming prayer. You did a good job at that. I really appreciate it. Okay, let's start off with the, council has an agenda in front of them for April 13th before us. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Counsel President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stamp.
I'm requesting that an item be added to the county managing report this evening, specifically a letter of support from the county for a FY21 Maryland Heritage Area's authority grant application by the DeShields family for the Bellevue Passage Museum. I would be adding that to the county manager report this evening. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Stamp. Counsel, do we have support for that?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Madam, do we need to vote on that, Madam Secretary?
I believe you just need to request to amend the agenda, approve the agenda, agenda as amended.
Okay, that sounds good.
Mr. Callahan, oops, hang on, there we go. The, we have three public hearings scheduled this evening, resolutions 299, 300, and 301. And because of scheduling, particularly the planning commission was not able to get their meeting scheduled prior to us having our public hearing this evening, I would request that we postpone those three until we are able to have the Public Works Advisory Board and the Planning Commission both meet and give us their recommendations. I believe that's the proper procedural tactic to take. So we certainly apologize for anybody who's prepared for this evening. Any, obviously, any written comments that we've already received, we will certainly make part of the record. But I believe we're talking about postponing this now so that we, both as bodies can get their meetings to May 25th. So I am commending the agenda.
Sounds great. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Madam Secretary, there's a motion in a second to amend the agenda, the April 13th agenda.
Okay. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is been changed for this evening. That's good. So if you are listening to us on the public hearing, so it would, it would be down the road in the next couple of meetings and we'll make you aware of what's going on. Okay, so let's, let's do the minutes. Counsel has had a chance to look at the minutes for March 23rd. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections for the minutes? Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, next, next on the agenda here, we got dispersments from March 30th, April 6th, and April 13th. Counsel has had a chance to review the dispersments from the 30th to 6th and the 13th of April. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Thank you, counsel. So, okay, first up, we have a proclamation of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Madam Secretary, would you please read the proclamation into the record?
Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2021, whereas sexual assault is an intolerable violent crime and a serious public health issue that affects millions of individuals each year. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community and can lead to long-term physical and psychological health problems, including chronic pain, headaches, anxiety, post-traumatic stress disorder, and sexually transmitted diseases. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts families, homes, schools, and workplaces in our community on a daily basis. And whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before age 18, and that youth ages 12 to 17 are two and a half times more likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault. And whereas on campuses, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college, and one in five women and one in 67 men will be raped at some point in their lives. And whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence and its prevention, support survivors, speak out against harmful attitudes and actions, and take action to create a safer environment for all. And whereas 2021 marks the 20th anniversary of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. The theme for this year's campaign, "We Can Build Safe Online Spaces", is built on foundational values of practicing consent, keeping children safe, and supporting survivors. Together with advocates and communities across the country, we can prevent online abuse as we build safe online spaces now and for the future. And whereas working to prevent sexual assault in our communities is the best gift we can give to survivors. And prevention is possible when everyone gets involved. And whereas Talbot County supports the experts who work to identify, decrease, and prevent sexual violence and is dedicated to providing services and alternative avenues for survivors to seek proper care and treatment. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is an opportunity to stand with sexual assault survivors to celebrate progress in combating these crimes and to recommit to reducing sexual violence in Talbot County. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby recognize April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Talbot County and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 13th day of April in the year of our Lord 2021.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there a motion in a second to approve proclamation? For move?
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call to roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Motion passed. That's great.
Okay, is Beth Ann Langrell, is from Four Seasons, is she on here?
I don't see her in the list. If you are on the phone, please press asterisk three on your phone and I will unmute you.
Beth Ann, are you, are you with us?
Mr. Callahan, I do see that we have Kristi Morondo from the For All Seasons organization. If she wanted to speak on behalf of this proclamation?
Sure. Okay, Kristi, are you with us?
I'm with you guys. How are you?
Okay, Kristi. Okay, you got, you got, it seems like you got people with you and animals. All right, Kristi?
Sorry about that. Yeah.
No problem.
I'll mute.
Kristi, would you like to, would you share some information with us?
I would. This year, we're going to focus on online spaces, staying safe with the, you know, with the pandemic. And we will be posting a lot of resources on our Facebook page with helpful tips and videos to support families and, and, you know, give them tips and ideas for keeping kids safe online.
That's, that's great. That's great, Kristi. Well, this is, this is something that is very important to all of us and we don't ever, ever, ever want to see happen. And I really appreciate all that you guys do down there because it's really extremely important that, that the work you do to help people and help people that are abused and stuff. So counsel, would counsel like to say anything? Okay.
I'd just say that we all recognize that the last year has created many different difficulties for us. And For All Seasons, I know, has posted a lot of information about the different phone calls that they're getting and being swamped and overworked with, because of the problems with people staying home, not necessarily having proper childcare. It's, I really appreciate that For All Seasons and all the community groups that helped work with this. But this is something that I'm hearing that is increasing due to people being at home and not necessarily having the proper care or guidance or supervision. So it's, it's something that does trouble me and I'm glad that we are making this known and aware of it.
Thank you, Mr. DeVilio. That's some very kind words. Mr. Pat, would you like to say something or?
Well, I would echo the same thoughts. And Four Seasons has been a great contributor to the community when it comes to mental health. And yes, the situation with COVID, people being confined into their homes, has elevated some of the domestic violence and sexual assaults we've seen, not just here in Talbot County, but across the nation. So it's good that Kristi and her group is taking the time to draw attention to sexual assault and what we can do as citizens to be aware of it and how to prevent it. So I just want to congratulate them on what they've gone so far and offer my support as they move forward in mental health here in Talbot County.
Thank you, Mr. Pat, for those kind words. Ms. Price?
Sorry, gotta find the unmute button. Just, obviously, just echoing everybody's comments and appreciate all of the groups and organizations that support people in need.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Mr. Vice President, Mr. Lester?
I just want to add my, my appreciation for, for All Seasons and the good work that you do in the community along with other, other partners. And you are a good partnering organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. Kristi, I just want to, you know, commend you guys and your team and Beth Ann. Beth Ann is, you know, pretty much on the radio, I believe, with WCI every week and giving that message. And I think it really helps the county and helps the listeners understand that there is help out there if, if, you know, they need it. And you guys do a great job. So really appreciate it. And you guys deserve a pat on the back and a congratulations. Thank, thank you, Kristi.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Okay, let's move on to another one that's extremely important. Native Plants Week. Madam Secretary, could you please read the proclamation for the record?
Native Plant Week, April 19th through the 25th, 2021. Whereas native plants help to define Talbot County's identity, natural history, and lifestyle. And whereas native plants provide food and shelter to hundreds of species of birds and other wildlife, many of which are species of concern and are increasingly threatened by climate change and human development, including the common milkweed plant and the monarch butterfly. And whereas native plants like the white oak are crucial habitats for nesting birds like Carolina chickadees, providing not just a place for nest building and chick rearing, but playing host to hundreds of species of insects, reptiles, amphibians, and mammals. And whereas there are over 20 native plant species of concern located in Talbot County with nine state rare or highly rare species and six species which are endangered or threatened. And whereas Maryland's native plants have adapted to flourish and thrive in our unique climate, geography, and hydrology and in harmony with local wildlife. And whereas Talbot's native plants are more drought and frost resistant, require less watering, and minimize the need for use of fertilizers and pesticides, thereby improving stormwater runoff entering the Chesapeake Bay and its tributaries. And whereas Pickering Creek Audubon Center and its regional partners encourage the purchase and use of native plants in gardens, lawns, and fields of all sizes and locations to sustain the beauty and benefits of our natural environment, honor those people who came before us, and create connections between people of all ages with our shared natural ecosystems. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim April 19th through the 25th, 2021 as Native Plant Week in Talbot County, Maryland, and commend its observance to all citizens, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 13th day of April in the year of our Lord 2021.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there a motion in a second to approve the proclamation?
I say move.
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you please call to roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Okay, is Mr. Jackson available and online? Mr. Jackson? Mr. Harrison Jackson?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. How are you from Pickering Creek?
I say thank you so much, County Council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight.
Good. You want, you want to give us a little bit of information on what you're doing and some good stuff here?
Absolutely. So native plants are critical to local wildlife and to humans. Having spent a lot of time out on the marshes myself and, you know, duck hunting and things like that, fragmites is an invasive species that's absolutely atrocious and causes a lot of problems. So native species like Spartina, you know, you talk about trees like white oaks. There's a lot of different native species of plants that really help wildlife and by extension, help humans, whether it's hunting or being out crabbing or fishing, or just going birding and enjoying being outside. Native species of plants really do help to provide a number of ecosystem services beyond what we use the outdoors for as well. So we really appreciate it.
Okay, yes, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. I'm going to open it up to counsel a little bit for a couple of comments. Ms. Price?
Pickering Creek is a great natural resource of natural resources. And so it's a wonderful organization and a wonderful location for people to go and visit and enjoy all of that beauty. So we thank you for being a part of that and bringing this proclamation to our attention.
Appreciate that. Mr. Lester?
I opened, I opened this meeting with, with a prayer, talking about, talking about our care of the creation. And, and this is one way that we can exercise that care, by, by attending to native plants and, and, and fighting off the invasives. And the habitat values as articulated in, in the, in the resolution are, and by, by Harrison here are, are legion. So we appreciate all you're doing on that front. And you, you and, and other organizations in the county, we know that, that you're, you're, you're an educator on this, but there are some good resources for obtaining these as well from other partners in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. I appreciate it. Mr. Pat?
Well, I will say this is a new one for me. On my 10-plus years, I think this is the first time we give a proclamation for Native Plant Week. So, but it serves a purpose. And I thank Pickering Creek for all that you do. Been up there several times with my family and enjoyed the, the environment and, and all that you all offer to keep the environment safe. So happy Native Plant Week and look forward to seeing you again with this.
Thank you, Mr. Pat. Mr. DeVilio?
Well, as a member that sits on the weed control committee, it's, it's nice to hear some native grasses and plants being discussed opposed to the invasive ones that everybody's looking for, which it's all, it's interesting hearing about the birds dropping seeds and how things happen like that and farmers, how aggressive they have to be to monitor it. But I do appreciate seeing the, the working waterfronts and the shorelines that we're seeing now with the native plants and grasses. I was always used to just seeing the Oxford Strand, whereas now the Oxford Park has a nice one of these. So I do enjoy seeing them and I'm glad that there's organizations helping keep the landscapers and those companies aware of these. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVilio. And I think we also have somebody on the line, Ms. Ann Walker. Are you, are you with us, Ms. Walker?
I am with you. Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yeah. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, I would just like to second what Harrison said. You know, the values of nature are really invaluable to humans and we need to be appreciating those more and more every day because if the bay is going to get more and more polluted, that will disintegrate our quality of life down here on the eastern shore that we love so much. So the native plants are, help us and the ecology. So we need to pay close attention. Thanks.
Yep, no, no problem. Thanks, Ms. Walker and Mr. Jackson for all you do, the hard work that you're doing to make us have a phenomenal county and healthy county because it takes these plants and trees to be healthy. So we really, we really sometimes underestimate that stuff. But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, it's people like yourself that really make this worthwhile and, and healthy and safe for, for us to live in this county. So I really appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so next, next we have up Margaret Inlow. We missed you big time last year. I mean, we missed you.
I, I missed us as well, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, no, we, we really, we really did. So I think you're here to tell us a little about what's going on and update us on, on the waterfowl because we're definitely ready to do it this year, I'm sure, I hope, you know?
Well, thank you. One of my, one of my, if you can call it a running joke, was now we know what it would take to not have a waterfowl festival in Talbot County. Obviously, it's a global pandemic.
Yes.
So, so, yeah, it, it, it had been a question ever since I became executive director, like, is, is this going to be every year? And obviously, it takes a global pandemic to have no waterfowl festival. So I thank you guys so much for the time to be on the agenda tonight. And boy, in the company of For All Seasons and Pickering Creek, a couple of other nonprofits that are real pinnacles in our county and our community. So the first message I have for you is that we are planning full steam ahead for Waterfowl Festival in November. If you didn't see that in the press release, we decided we'd better put that out there because there were all sorts of rumors circulating around. And what I'm here actually to talk to you all about tonight is our economic and cultural impact study. So if I can figure out screen share, I'm going to go through this study relatively quickly and happy to take any questions before or during or after the presentation. But one of the things I want to mention about this study is that we commissioned it in 2019 very specifically, let me have, uh-oh, how do I do this? To get ready for the 50th anniversary year, which would have been in 2020.
Got you.
There we go. So the reason we did that in 2019 is that we really wanted to measure what our community thought about us, what our economic value was to the region. And we wanted to be able to have that information for our 50th anniversary festival. Well, we may not have had our event last year, but this year is the 50th festival. And it'll be November 12th through 14th, second weekend in November, second full weekend every year. So the study was conducted by Rockport Analytics. Rockport is a firm that's actually based in Annapolis. And we were really fortunate to be able to find a local firm of such high quality who could also bring their people and spend time at festival weekend. I think those of us who are on the line sort of understand the principle that you almost don't get the festival unless you can attend the festival. So it's really valuable to have a firm that was local. They're independent. They have a longstanding track record of creating credible assessments and leading organizations in both the private and the public sector. They've done high-profile events like the analysis of the Super Bowl, the Pocono 500, as well as the Masters. I'm happy to talk a little bit more about them if people have questions, but I also want to touch on the model that they use. In any economic analysis, you're using a modeling format. They use the INPLAN model, which stands for Impact Analysis for Planning. And it draws from the most extensive economic database available while also allowing for detailed input that reflects sort of a local flavor. The software has been used by government agencies, academia, and leading researchers for more than 40 years. So just to let you know, very credible company, better, very credible results. So what I want, the study, first of all, let me at the top of the page, point out that the entire study is about 32 pages long. It's available on the waterfowlfestival.org website. Today, we're going to talk about the highlights in terms of economic, cultural, and community impact, as well as what we learned. We'll look at activities and lodging information. And then really important piece of information is visitors and attendees' satisfaction and loyalty. I would be remiss if I didn't thank the stories of the Chesapeake Heritage Area for underwriting this project, as well as several other projects that helped get us ready for our 50th. They have been really invaluable in helping us set that infrastructure and we really appreciate their support. If you wonder why other organizations don't do these studies, they're actually fairly expensive for organizations of a small size. So grant funding is very critical. So I'm just going to go straight to the big number. Our total economic impact from the 2019 Waterfowl Festival is $2.6 million in the Talbot County economy. That's a pretty significant number for a regional three-day event that draws visitors from all over. I want to talk a little bit about the term visitors, though. And you all may be familiar with what I'm about to explain since you do have Cassandra on your team. But I want to clarify what visitors mean. So we estimate just over 15,000 people came to the festival. We call those attendees. And that was for 2019. Of those attendees, 45% meet the description of a visitor when you're doing an economic impact or tourism analysis. A visitor is defined as someone that traveled 50 miles or more to come or someone that stayed overnight. And in our case, that the primary reason they came was to come to the festival. So why this matters is that visitors that come from that distance are a measurement of new monies brought into the county by the event. So that's really what we're talking about in terms of visitor spending here is new monies that we benefited from. It also aligns with the way the state of Maryland looks at tourism data. So that also allows us to look at our visitor data in the larger picture if we wish to. Let me, before I go on, because I'm going to talk a lot about visitor spending, any questions about visitors and attendees and that definition? I'll take that as a no. If any come up, just let me know.
Yeah, sure.
So one of the other important statistics that came out of this report was jobs and wages. 48 jobs, full and part-time, resulted in $1.6 million in wages paid in Talbot County. The large portion of these wages ripple through the economy because workers spend it on groceries or they do other activities in the county. So it's, it's something that's an important feature to remember when you're looking at economic impact. The next thing I want to talk about is where our visitors spend. We actually have a relatively remarkable amount of spend. amount of spending that happens on retail. What we learned from this study is that waterfowl visitors come and they shop. The average visitor spend on shopping at a similar event is about 20% of their total spend. People that come to festivals spend about one-third of their monies on shopping. It's really pretty remarkable amount of money for just a small weekend. Yes.
Margaret, this is Laura. Is that shopping outside of buying a piece of artwork? I would assume the artwork that's bought with the waterfowl festival would be separate?
No, shopping, shopping in general. We asked people where they were spending. So this is shopping at the festival venues, but also shopping at our retail businesses in Talbot County.
But it would be inclusive of if they bought a painting by Art LeMay then?
It would be inclusive of, yes, if they bought a fine art piece. We've done a whole lot of analysis actually in the last year on our fine art spending. And most of the art that's bought at the festival, easily half of it, is under the $250 range. And the really big pieces, we have fewer than you would think, big art buyers every year. So a lot of the art buying is sort of the smaller pieces. And that, so it does include all of that. Very good question, very good point. Let's see, I think if you look at the spending on retail and food and beverage, more than half of visitor spending, about 55%, is retail, excuse me, is shopping and food and beverage. One of the things I want to note is lodging, and I'll talk in detail about that a little bit more. Only about 20% of the spend is on lodging, and that's because, and I think this won't surprise anyone on the meeting here, a lot of our visitors who do stay over stay with family or friends that are here. So about 20% of the people that stay over are staying with family or friends. So the lodging dollars that you see here refer to what's spent on paid lodging, I guess is the best way to put it. The amount spent on lodging by visitors on waterfowl weekend represents more than a quarter of the lodging spend for all of Talbot County for November. So still a significant number.
Let me ask you a question. Isn't that lodging number, are S T Rs included?
They are, actually. We're gonna look at that in the next slide if my computer hasn't frozen. There we go. Actually, I'll jump ahead and I'll come back to the slide I just skipped. So if you look at the accommodations and where people stay, hotels and motels are at about 47%. Friends or relatives, 26%. And in this analysis, they call that peer-to-peer rental. So that's at about 9% for people that come during waterfowl weekend. Bed and breakfast and other lodging is also about 8 or 9%. We were really curious how many people came and camped. So you can see from the data here, only about 1% of people are coming and camping. The other thing about lodging is that not, I suspect, pardon?
Camping?
Yeah, I know.
Overnight camping in the county?
No, not necessarily in the county. We wanted to know how many people were camping in general. We're, because we were curious, if you look at the next part of the slide, we wondered how many people stayed outside of Talbot County as well. And we were curious if they camped at Tuckahoe or Martinack State Park. We were curious if they stayed in Kent Island. And what we found in all that lodging information is that most people do stay within Talbot County. 57% in Easton, 12% in St. Michael's, Oxford had 7%. Cambridge, of course, Dorchester attracts some people for lodging as well. So going back one slide, because I skipped over this to address the question, in terms of length of stay, most people stay an average of about two nights, and some stay a little bit longer. People who are staying with friends or family tend to stay a little bit longer. They tend to stay three days, and they tend to have a larger party size. Our visitors are really split between day trippers and overnight guests. So 40% of people come for the day, and overnight guests are at about, what is it, 53% stay one, two, or three days. So looking at taxes, the two pieces of tax information that are most significant are on the right-hand side, the hotel tax. We generate, we, waterfowl festival spend results in $29,000 in hotel taxes. And on property taxes, the things to know about them, this is really looking at, I might note here, in the INPLAN model, what it does is it allocates a portion of total property tax receipts, receipts, based upon visitors' contributions to residential wages and commercial revenue. So the 77% figure mostly represents business property taxes. So 77% of the proceeds on sales generated by, excuse me, based on the sales generated by Waterfowl Festival, 77% of those proceeds support businesses in paying their property taxes. So think of it as sort of a pass-through and how it contributes. So here's where we switch to what do people think of us? This was something we really wanted to know, and we surveyed people all during Waterfowl Festival 2019. Not familiar, I'm not sure if you're familiar with net promoter scores, but a net promoter score is done on a scale of 100, and it really applies to events or festivals, and it's a measure of determining who's likely to visit again and who's likely to promote your event to others. It's not only about loyalty or satisfaction, it also can be tracked over time, and it will help us look to improve our offerings and increase that activity. So our net promoter scores were far beyond our expectations. A net promoter score of 60 is considered very good for an event. Overnight visitors gave us a 90. Visitors whose primary reasons to be here to enjoy the heritage and traditions, 86. First-time visitors, 86. Repeat visitors, 83. Visitors in general, 74. And I was heartened to know that the Talbot County score was really good as well, because I know that we are not terribly convenient for a lot of people that live here. We have people that love to volunteer for us, and we couldn't do it without them. And I know we have people that kind of go around town on festival weekend. So to find that Talbot County residents give us a net promoter score of 62 was still really wonderful as far as I was concerned. 89% of attendees are satisfied or extremely satisfied with the festival, and that is attendees. So that's out of the 15,000 people. 82% of residents believe we're important or essential to celebrating and showcasing local cultural heritage. 75% very important or essential for providing recreational and educational opportunities. So here we are at our 50-year mark, and we consider that we've really helped define Easton's identity, and we've been vital for promoting our lifestyle, love for the outdoors, and love for the arts, far beyond our eastern shore and our county. What was also heartening from our residents is that they believe that the waterfowl is important or essential to stimulating the local economy, and that this year is obviously more important than ever. We're very important for promoting local attractions and amenities. Most residents, I loved these as well. Most residents believe we're important for uniting the community towards a common goal, igniting a sense of community pride, and providing opportunities for more civic engagement. And we have completely embraced the idea that we're almost an annual homecoming for people that return here year after year. Wanted to also highlight a couple of the reasons that people attend Waterfowl Festival. So arts and supporting artists, sporting and outdoor aspects, cultural and heritage traditions. They love walking around town, the food and beverage, the dining out. They attend activities all across the county as well, because many organizations hold activities that weekend. This reflects some of the same data. Food and beverage and fine art are the top performing answers, but of course, and no surprise, I think, the diving dog competitions and the retriever dogs are also very, very popular. And if you remember in 2019, if you walked around the festival, there were a few more dogs on the streets than I think we had seen in a long time, which might be something we have to figure out how to work in concert with the town to manage. So really, in wrapping up, a couple of different things. I do want to mention that we are a nonprofit organization, and I say that publicly as often as I can, because I think people still do not understand that and do not realize that we have a broader conservation and community message and mission. We're seeing our fourth generation of loyal guests, and if I had had a crystal ball, this economic impact study comes at a perfect time, because I think it demonstrates that we will be a critical part of the recovery in 2021. And we're really super excited about that. The other thing this study tells me, and I think the whole county needs to be aware of this, the town needs to be aware of this, if our visitors are as loyal as what we're seeing in this data, and they return year after year, and they've missed a year, I think we're gonna have a bang-up 50th festival in November this year. I think we might see a turnout far exceeding what we've seen in recent years. We're really thankful for the community's support from the volunteers and for the businesses, the downtown businesses that support us, the corporate sponsors that support us. And we're just, we're really excited about the coming year. I would also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge our partnership with the County Office of Tourism. Cassandra Van Hoosier has been an invaluable partner in helping us in terms of marketing and reaching new audiences, thinking a little bit differently about things. And my final request or message for the council is that I know that there are federal recovery monies that are being offered to localities, and it's our hope that the county would consider being an official sponsor of the Waterfowl Festival this year and helping us make it the best golden anniversary celebration it could possibly be. We, we love that we have a net promoter score for visitors of 90. We'd like to really knock it out of the park and make that net promoter score outstanding for this year. So that's what I have on the economic impact study, and I thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Well, thanks a lot, Margaret. What a great, great presentation. And counsel, I'm gonna open it up to counsel. Mr. DeValeo?
Laura, how'd you get up? So thank you very much for this great presentation. There was, and it's full of tons of information. The one thing that I could not find that I did want to address, just because we had the schools coming in next are the duck sitters, and how many high school kids earn their community service hours volunteering for the Waterfowl Festival? It's, it's a great benefit for them as well. And I can't imagine, I'm part of the Lions Club, and we just serve food, and we have, I don't know, a dozen kids every day helping us set up and everything. And it's a great way to get students involved in the community at the volunteering level, and that's where I started. So I greatly appreciate that program that you, that you run for them. That is very important, in my opinion.
It's, it's where, so, so just for everyone's, to be clear with everyone, we only have a staff of three, paid staff of three. And the fact that we have this community event that runs as it does is due to the festival chairman. We have 60 festival chairmen that, between the staff and the chairman, manage all the event, all the venues, and manage about, we think we're at about 850 volunteers to make the event run on any given weekend. I bring that up because many of our chairman, who I dare say are in our collective age bracket here, started as duck sitters. So the duck center program is pretty important.
Yeah, sure is. Sure is. Thank you, Mr. DeValeo. Mr. Pike?
Just very briefly, thank you for the presentation. It was very informative and shows the economic impact that the waterfowl is making here in Talbot County.
Thank you, Mr. Pike. Mr. Luescher?
Just to take us back to one of, one of Ms. Enlow's opening statements about the firm that they engaged for this, Rockport Analytics, you know, there are times that you look at economic impact statements, and you, you wonder where they got these, these figures. Rockport is, is known as, as a pretty conservative, or using a pretty conservative model. These numbers are really credible. If anything, this is, the impact of this is errors on the side of understatement. And, and that only further underscores how important this event is to, to this community.
Thank you. If I, if I, I just remembered one point that I left out that might be specific to what Mr. Luescher just said. Remember, visitors are what we measured? We asked Rockport to also estimate the economic impact from people who attended within 50 miles, but outside of Talbot County, and that estimated an additional $1.5 million in the impact. So that's, that's local spending.
Mrs. Price, you want to say a few words?
I don't, I don't have any additional questions. It was sad to have missed a year. I'm forward to this coming November. I'm one of those 62, in the 62 score, and love, and definitely don't avoid the Waterfowl Festival. It's wonderful. So I guess you guys are just really, really excited to get geared up again. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, Margaret, once again, we're so glad that you're back with us, and I mean, your presentation was phenomenal. And you mean so much to Talbot County, that's for sure. And you run a really, you run a really good program, and if it's anything that the council can do for you, you know, we're always here for you. Please reach out to us if you need anything. But congratulations. And there was one thing, is, have you set a date yet?
November 12, 13, and 14.
Okay, so pretty much like normal. Yep.
Pretty much like normal. Yep. And with the caveat that we're not at all sure what normal's gonna look like, we're gonna figure something out for that weekend.
Yeah, there we go. That's good. Well, we appreciate everything you guys do, and all the volunteers, we appreciate them too. So did you happen to have anybody else with you tonight that wanted to say anything, or were you by yourself?
I think it's just me tonight and our grass cutter outside.
There you go. Okay, well, thanks for everything, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, counsel, we're gonna move on a little bit here to the next thing on the agenda. The council right now has a presentation with Sarah Jones, Talbot County Public Schools. Sarah's the CFO, and she's gonna ask for some budget transfers and tell us a little bit about what she wants with the use of the fund balance. So good evening, Sarah. How are you?
I'm great. Thank you so much, members of council, for having me tonight. So on April 1, we submitted a revised FY22 budget request to members of council for their consideration. And as part of that budget request, we identified some savings in our current FY21 operating budget that we felt we could use to pre-fund and take care of some items from FY that were originally in our FY22 budget. So what I'm coming to tonight for is the permission to do what our Board of Ed approved at their March 31 meeting, which was to move some categorical expenditures among categories. So really what I'm asking is that we move $900,000 out of our instructional salaries. We had savings there due to vacancies. We had some key vacancies throughout the year that we just weren't able to fill or fill late in the year. And so there were some more significant dollar amount vacancies, as well as a number of vacancies, just normal, normal turnover throughout the year. So we'd like to use those savings in the following way. We'd like to shift 272,000 of it to instructional materials. One item in our FY22 budget was the adoption of a new social studies curriculum, which comes at a high price. It's a necessary adoption mandated by MSD's curriculum requirements. But we could purchase that early with FY21 funds. We'd like to shift $128,000 to our plan operations category to pre-buy some custodial supplies and get stocked up for next year with some of the PPE and custodial and get stocked up for next year with some of the PPE and custodial supplies that we need. And we would like to make an advance payment into our healthcare trust of $500,000. And so that would help bring down next year's healthcare cost.
So I was going to, actually, that was the question I was going to ask, Sarah. I was like, well, if you saved $900,000 in instructional salaries, how did the health insurance go up? But that's for pre-funding next year.
Right. And actually, after this adjustment and a few other adjustments, which I could talk through some of the other adjustments in our proposed revised budget, our health insurance cost actually went down. So we, and so I can, I can get into that and I'd be happy to do that if you'd like.
That's okay. I mean, we would think that if you have fewer employees, you'd have a little bit less in health insurance. So on the item two, plant operations for custodial supplies not covered in grants, anything that's COVID related should be funded, especially with the dollars that are coming. So I'm a little hesitant to say, let's use regular TCPS operating dollars to pay for something that I think, I mean, we know we have at least 3 million coming. I know you have to apply for them. So I'm a little hesitant to approve that now. It seems a little premature, you know, whether we have to come back to it or not, or if we approve it and you get the grant funds, then we have to figure out where it would go if you don't end up needing the 128,000 with this new round of CARES money that's coming to the schools to pay specifically for COVID items. So if you, so if you don't spend it, where, what would we do with it?
Well, if we didn't spend it, we might come back to you in a few months and say, we found a different purpose for it, or, you know, we may just not need to spend it. But I, the thing about the CARES money is, we haven't figured out our budget. We need to figure it out before May, but those funds are for a three-year period of time. So we are looking sort of at a long-term, not just a one-year budget. We want to, you know, see when it makes the most sense to rely on those funds. And it would cover anything from, like you said, PPE and cleaning supplies, to technology, to addressing learning loss, to, there's a pretty broad way in which we can use those funds, not just limited to PPE.
Because typically in all the years I've been, you know, the 11 years I've been doing this so far, the categorical transfers are same year to same year, just a simply different category. This is different. This is for next year and sometimes we have savings in the year and we can go ahead and buy some capital outlay, you know, things in advance of the next budget year, like you're doing with the social studies curriculum. And, you know, we know health insurance is a cost. Again, I'm a little squishy on item two because I think you're going to get the money, I think you're going to get plenty of money for that. So I'm not a big fan of that one, just because I think the money's coming for cleaning type things.
Okay. I agree. We do, I mean, currently this year, we are overspent already in custodial supplies and we are going to be using, I think we're $180,000 overspent in custodial supplies already in this year. So we are going to be using some of our grant funds or all, you know, grant funds to cover that loss. So we're already, you know, allocating a pretty significant portion of grant funds. We're, you know, a significant amount of funds toward that. And so I think until we have the full picture of how we want to try to allocate or designate all of the SRF funds that we are going to be getting, our thought was, we don't want to, you know, necessarily reserve a huge portion of those grant funds that we could also use to, you know, fund positions, fund learning loss strategies on PPE and cleaning. So that was our thought.
Okay. Sounds great. Sounds great, Sarah. So, council, Mr. DiVillio, got any, any questions for Ms. Jones? Okay, thank you. Mr. Pack? Mr. Pack?
I'm sorry, no questions.
Okay. Mr. Vice President?
I made, I made some of these remarks in the, in the budget deliberations publicly, but, but really, I, well, while Ms. Jones is here, I want to simply commend the school system for this creative approach. As, as Mrs. Price pointed out, we really haven't looked in the school budget at forward, forward funding items through this process before, although we routinely do it for, for other, other departments. And I think that that kind of creative thinking is, is going to be beneficial to the Talbot County taxpayers and we know that you are facing some, some significant costs to address summer school that in an unprecedented way, we, you've got some, some special challenges. You've really risen to the occasion and, and I can support the request.
Thank you, Mr. Leisher. Okay, council, I, Ms. Jones, I just want to commend you for coming to us and explaining that to us and you're doing a really good job and we, we really appreciate all your effort in trying to save money and looking at creative ways to, to save money for us. I really appreciate it. So, being that said, council, is there a motion in a second to approve the transfer use of fund balance as outlined? Or moved?
Counsel, they haven't really discussed the use of fund balance. The only thing that's been discussed has been the transfers.
We don't need one by one? That be addressed as, in a combined motion at the end of the presentation?
Let's keep them separate.
Or one combined?
Let's keep them separate.
That's fine. Angela, would you want, you just want to keep them separate? Is that, is that why we want to do this?
Separate's fine, we do, but we just have to be clear that you voted on, it's clear that you voted on both issues separately.
Okay.
I'll interject one thing.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Sarah.
I'm not sure if this impacts or not. The fund balance that we're talking about using is really, I, I view it as more of an FY22 budget aspect. It's, it's listed as a line item now in our revised FY22 budget, meaning we want to use our end of year 63021 fund balance in that way. We weren't necessarily planning to prepay any items with our fund balance last year. Does that make sense? In other words, we now have taken out $360,000 of our funding request to the county by saying we would fund that in FY22 with our fund balance. So it's not so much an FY21 item as it is an FY22 item as part of our budget. That's just how I see it. You may see it differently.
No, I think that's exactly how it's been presented to the county and it's how, it's how I've interpreted it also. But I do think council needs to approve the use of fund balance for you all for next fiscal year, as well as the transfer for the current fiscal year.
Okay.
So, so Angela, since we haven't even introduced fiscal year 22's budget, I think it doesn't seem, we should address this when we're going through the, you know, approving the fiscal year 22 budget as far as use of fund balance. It just seems odd to vote on how we're, that's our next agenda item is to introduce the budget and we haven't had a public hearing on it yet.
Yeah, except they truly aren't, they are going to show up in the county's portion of the fiscal 22 budget. It's just to give the board permission to use fund balance to pay expenses. So whether we do it now or later, I guess doesn't matter, but we're, you know, they were combined in the same memo.
Can we, can we put a? Go ahead, Mr. Pack.
I, I think the motion that was made was just regarding the transfer of the $900,000 from FY21 and that was the motion that I, that I, I made. So if we can just deal with that and then go to the fund balance question, I think we're.
That'd be great.
Confused with both points.
Okay, so, so council, so right now, we're just going to work, work on and vote on the, the transfer, which is the $900,000. So is, is there, is there a motion in a second to do that?
You already have that.
Okay, okay.
So, just before we, I just, I, you know, I mentioned it before about the 128,000 to do everything you can, you know, with the funds that are coming, that if you don't need to use our regular operating expenses for those extra COVID-type expenses, please don't. And let's find some other place for them to go. Because, I mean, you know, those types of things we're supposed to get reimbursed for and I know every department is keeping track of all of our COVID expenses and so I'd hate to just see our regular per pupil money going to something that is not a normal expense. So just keep it in the back of your head. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Price. So, okay, we got a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right. Okay. Okay, the next thing would be the fund balance and I think, Sarah, she sort of explained that. You want to explain that one more time and we'll take, we can put it on that.
Sure. So what we're proposing to do is to use $360,000 of our fund balance at the end of June 30, 2021 to fund two item, or to fund items in our FY22 budget request.
Okay, council, we've got a motion in a second to approve a fund balance of about $360,000 for, for, for the fund balance. Do you have a motion in a second?
I, I will so move and remark in the process that this, this suggestion to, to pay down that, that down payment on the OPEB is, is one that actually originated from this council. So the, the school, the school district is simply circling back to us with, in part of this request fulfilling our, our suggestion.
I'll second it. I'll second the motion, Mr. Callahan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pack. Okay, we got a motion seconding it. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right. Okay, council, thank you. Sarah, you did a great job. I really appreciate all you're doing and I know it's hard and it's been, it's been a tough year on all of you guys and we'll do our best to help you guys out.
Thank you. We appreciate that and hope to give our revised budget a consideration, and I know you will.
Okay, I appreciate it now. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to introduction of legislation, okay? Let's see here. Madam Secretary, would you please read the title of the bill into the record?
An Act to Establish the 2021-2022 Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lane and, and Mr. Stamp, turn it over to you for your PowerPoints and explain this budget to us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Council President, members of the council. Angela and I will walk through a PowerPoint with you. The line share will be Angela, who does most of the work and does a great job at it. So we're going to get this presentation up. Jessica, are you controlling it? Who's controlling it?
I am controlling it. Can you all see it?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Council President, can you see it?
Members? Yeah, yes, sir, I can. Mr. Stamp, yep.
Down in the lower left-hand corner, or excuse me, lower right-hand corner, just click on, yeah, you got it.
Okay. There we go.
Angela, go ahead and start off.
Okay. The FY fiscal 2022 proposed general fund budget is $112,535,000. Our current budget for fiscal '21 is $96,550,000. The county council received requests for operating and capital items of just over $119 million, which is $22.5 million more than the current fiscal '21 budget. The fiscal '22 proposed general fund budget is $112,535,000, which is $15,985 more than the current year budget and that is 16.56% more than the current year budget. However, included in this increase of almost $16 million, over $14 million is for transfers to capital projects fund of $10 million and for capital outlay and equipment purchases of $4 million. And to offset those basically new expenses and one-time expenses, the budget is funded with revenues of $20.8 million from prior year fund balance. The fiscal '22 budget for operating expenses in the general fund is increasing by 3.86%. That's a fairly modest increase, especially when you look at our total budget increasing by 16, over 16%, really just under 4% is going to operating expenses. The budget does include a one cent increase to the real property tax rate above what is allowed under the current real property tax cap as authorized by the voters of Talbot County in November of 2020. And public safety is a top priority in this budget. I will now ask Mr. Clay to go through some budget strategy items.
So, as council is aware, we, in developing this budget, the strategies around it is that we were looking at focusing on three primary areas. Personnel retention and recruitment, strategic projects and efficiency in our processes. You can go ahead and banter slide. And as, as Angela remarked, when you look at the budget, we were looking at a modest increase in the operational line item of the budget, but clearly an investment in our capital improvement projects. In the previous presentation, they talked about, you know, the hope of moving into a year of recovery. That's what we're seeing nationally, regionally, across the state of Maryland. There's a lot of grant opportunities coming and hopefully the number of COVID cases will continue to decrease as the number of vaccinations increase. So investing in a year of recovery was some thought behind this budget. So one of the things we talk about here in Talbot County is outlined in our comprehensive plan, as well as our community resiliency and hazard mitigation plan, are the five pillars that hold our community up. And those are public safety and health infrastructure, environment, education, and economic stability. So whether it's emergency management or even invest, investing budgetarily, we keep those in our mind. So as we, as we invest in a capital improvement project, we can see that in this year, for example, you go ahead and slide, you can see this year, just, just as a couple examples, the budget supports, as voters indicated, they wanted to see in the last election, a graduated expansion of paramedic services in the north end of the county, which will require adding a station and a paramedic crew. It contains funding enhancements to our volunteer fire departments to address operational costs as well as supporting personnel for retention and recruitment. So again, those pillars of public safety and health were touched there. Funding for the extension of sanitary sewer services into the Bay 100 area especially, which is an environmental project because we're rescuing a number of septic tanks that may be failing and putting toxins into our waterways. A construction of key road projects or infrastructure projects, like an example of that is Airport Road and Gulf Burnet Road. That is a secondary means of ingress and egress to the Bay 100 area and frankly, an evacuation route for that area and council has prioritized that project. So these are a few projects that are behind that bigger increase in the capital improvement program. Again, the capital improvement program is an investment into our future and frankly, a number of the projects in this are long overdue and need to be addressed. And just merely by engaging to this level in this program, we are trying to address and stimulate economic development as well. I'll hand it back to you, Angela.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Um, again, the modest increase in the operations budget of just over three point eight percent includes a number of new and important items, uh, with the primary focus again being on public safety. The first one is, we do have funding for increased retirement expense associated with potentially joining the law enforcement officer's pension system, LEOPS, for the sheriff's office. This has been something that's been discussed for a number of years, um, and we do have the funding for the retirement expense in this proposed budget. We also have salary scale adjustments for nine-one-one dispatchers, EMT, paramedics, and correctional officers to, to address recruitment and retention issues. Again, those departments have had significant burdens placed on them during the last year and are often hard to recruit, so hopefully by adjusting our salary scale, we can recruit and retain our employees in those departments. We have added six new positions, four additional positions for a twelve-hour-a-day emergency medical services unit. That is our surge unit that we started in the current fiscal year, primarily being funded through overtime and some part-time employees. Um, the goal is now to make that a permanent, or be a permanently staffed position with full-time positions. So those are the four positions for that unit. We've added one legal assistance for the office of the state's attorney and one administrative fiscal position for the Department of Public Works. The Talbot County Public Schools is funded at the same level as in fiscal two thousand twenty-one, which is five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars more than the state mandated maintenance of level, maintenance of effort funding level. And this budget does include a step increase for eligible full-time county employees. This slide shows our revenues in the proposed budget as compared to the current budget in major category areas. And property taxes being our largest revenue stream is going up just over four and a half percent. Um, part of that increase, which is quite a bit above what we would normally expect to see, which would be in the two to three percent range, is because of the one percent, one cent additional penny that we were able to add to the property tax rate due to the change, um, implemented by the voters last November. Income taxes, we're projecting to be basically constant. Um, and most of our other revenue streams are pretty much bouncing around a little bit, but not too much. The two other changes, both increases that are quite significant, are transfer from other funds, which is going up over, well, five hundred thousand dollars, and that is, um, a transfer from the special revenue fund to help, help offset debt service expenses in the current budget and the use of prior year fund balances. But again, the majority of that is going to capital projects and capital outlay, which are one-time expenses. Just showing the distribution of those funds, um, which is pretty consistent from prior years, other than the use of fund balances higher this year. But, um, that is probably not something that will continue year after year. This is more of a one-time transfer. And our expenditures, again, public schools is, um, a significant portion of our budget. It's over forty percent of our budget just to the one agency, um, and that number is actually going down slightly. And the reason why it's going down slightly is because of debt service. When we prepared the fiscal twenty-one budget, we had not actually borrowed the funds for the Eastern Elementary School. So we put in an estimate in the fiscal twenty-one budget. When we actually borrowed the funds, that number went down, and our first payment for the Eastern Elementary School of principal won't actually happen until July one, two thousand twenty-one, which is in our fiscal twenty-two budget. So we didn't have a principal payment due in fiscal twenty-one on the Eastern Elementary School. So that's part of the difference there, the timing and the amounts. Um, other county operations are going up by eight percent. And that includes all our other county operations, our county departments, as well as the Health Department, the Library, Chesapeake College, the volunteer fire departments, all those other groups are in that number. So our operating expense is only going up by three, three point eight four percent. In addition to that, again, where the big increases are, are in capital outlay and our transfer to other funds. Ten million dollars of our transfer to other funds is going to the Capital Projects Fund. Uh, one point eight million dollars is going to the golf course for the renovation and, well, the replacement of the irrigation system that's over forty years old at that site. So those are really the major drivers of the increase in this year's budget. And here's a graphic again showing, you know, public schools and county operations are pretty much the same portion of our budget, and we have transfers to other funds, as well as some capital outlay and some contingency money in this budget. And so far, I've just been discussing general fund, but since ten million dollars of our general fund budget is a transfer to the Capital Projects Fund, I did want to put this slide in just to show where we are proposing to spend funds in fiscal twenty-two in the capital projects area. Um, first thing you'll notice is the capital projects budget is eighteen point eight million dollars. So some of these items are going to be funded through grants and through long-term borrowing, as well as cash from our transfers. So we're looking for land acquisition, and this is not to increase land acquisition. It's to fund, have the opportunity to be able to purchase land with cash as we have opportunities for future county projects. We actually do already have two million dollars in the capital projects budget, but that's to be funded by debt. And basically, the rules with borrowing, sometimes it doesn't make sense to borrow for smaller land purchases. So we want to be able to propose legislation through the Capital Projects Fund to allow us to purchase land for future uses with our reserve, with our cash in that fund rather than borrowing. Um, we do have some overlay, overlay projects for our parking lots. We do have the first phase of our public safety center. That'll be five million dollars, and that will house the sheriff's office, as well as other public safety operations. Uh, the sheriff's office does need to vacate the Talbot County Business Center in the near future, so this is a priority project. We do have some courthouse roof repairs and replacements that need to be done. And then our next big public safety project is expansion of EMS stations, particularly in the north end of the county. And we have broadband expansion, and this broadband expansion is to provide broadband services in the unserved area of the county. It will not compete with any current providers. This is to go into the areas that have not been offered service by the private providers. Under highways and streets, we have funding for a black dog alley that will start some improvements for that road that are necessary for traffic safety, and as well as funding for Airport Road, again, to look at the expansion of that road in terms of widening, to allow it to handle the type of traffic that it is now receiving. And this will be phase one of the Airport Road upgrades and expansion. For parks, we have some funding to continue with the Frederick Douglass Park on the Tuckahoe. Uh, we are trying to do the next phase so that park can be more readily used by our citizens and visitors. And we do have some funding for a study of the Bill Burton Park down on the Chop Tank River. And our final item in the capital budget is our public schools. This is the first phase of the Eastern High School roof replacement. This roof, it'll be a two-year project, and, um, this is the first phase of it to allow this project to be, start for half the school roof replacement in the summer of twenty-two. And then we will have some funds that will go into Capital Projects Fund reserves, three point eight million dollars. So those will be available for the next year. Um, and as you just heard me say, the Eastern High School roof is a two-year project. We will need some of those funds to fund the next phase of that project, as well as some of the other ones. And, um, this budget is using twenty point eight million dollars of fund ballots. It is a big number, but it is not, we're not being foolhardy with our funds. This is a summary of our fund balances going back to fiscal two thousand nine, which are, and this is our discretionary fund balance. So in addition to our discretionary fund balance, we still have our rainy day fund, which is in thirteen million dollar range. So we have that, plus we have these funds. Back in two thousand nine, we had twenty-one point five million dollars, and that was a serious economic downturn in two thousand nine and ten. And we did use almost seventeen million dollars in those two years to shore up county revenues. Uh, we do not expect any potential downturn in fiscal twenty-two and beyond to be of that magnitude. So I'm very comfortable that when we finish fiscal twenty-two, we'll have a fund balance, a discretionary fund balance of fifteen million dollars, which is more than enough to weather any potential downturns that are being projected at this point for the next few years. So I think we are in good shape, even with a fairly significant use, but we need to use these funds for infrastructure repairs that have not been done for a number of years in the county. And the proposed budget will have public hearings held on Tuesday, May fourth, at two PM and at seven PM. Um, and the public is always encouraged to submit written comments because of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Um, so if people want to submit public comments, the address is publiccomment@talbotcountymd.gov. And for more information on the budget, we will post the budget in this PowerPoint and a summary in the next few days on our county website. And that is the end of the slideshow. So I don't know if there are any questions or comments?
Yep. Okay, counsel, um, great presentation, um, Angela, a, as usual, you, you've done a phenomenal job. You and Mr. Stamp and staff, all of you put together, um, counsel, I'm gonna commend you guys for doing a great job. We spent the last several months putting all this together, so I'm gonna open it up, um, for, for comments. So, uh, Mr. Lesher, Vice President, you want, you want to speak on this?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Um, the, um, when we went, when we went to the Talbot County electorate last year and asked them to put a measure on the ballot, uh, to, uh, to modify, uh, in, in a fairly modest way, the, the tax cap to allow that extra penny, uh, to keep it at a solid two percent rather than consumer price index, uh, or the lower of that or two percent, um, we made a commitment. And we said, where there is a critical need is in, is in public safety. Uh, and it's both in the capital needs with the, uh, the construction of the sheriff's office on the horizon, but also, also the recruitment and retention of our officers. Uh, and the aspects of, of this budget that have to do with, with, uh, public safety salaries, uh, not only a sheriff's office, but in emergency services and so forth, all of those public safety functions, um, we're making a, a real commitment. Uh, yes, there's, there's an increase, but as we, as, uh, the budget presentation pointed out, uh, we've, we've managed to hold that to, to less than four percent with, uh, with this, uh, with this new support from, uh, from the property tax. I, this, this, I believe, is a responsible and sustainable budget and is fulfilling, as we made that commitment to the public, uh, those critical functions, uh, and funding them going forward. Uh, we, we heard from the public that these are important, these need to be funded, and we're true to our word here. This is where this money is going.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher. Uh, Mr. DeVio?
Well, I'm terrified. Um, it's, it's a big increase, you know, and, uh, it, it definitely makes me nervous. But as I go back and I look at all the, the projects that we've been, that have been on hold for years, uh, and have been discussed and ideas thrown around, I'm glad that we have some incredible department heads. Um, Mrs. Lane is, or Mrs. Lane is fantastic, and when you sit down and, and run through this budget and know about what has been planned in the past, what we're working towards, and the goal of where we'll be, uh, I, I know that we're, we're making some huge improvements, um, both in, in traffic and safety and, uh, in, in all departments, really. Um, but it's, it comes at a time when money isn't just freely flowing. You, you look around and, and businesses are either closed or hiring right now. It, it's, it's a very odd time. And, and I am very nervous because I know, uh, we still have a road to recovery to come out of this, and we're not, we're not there yet. Um, but I, I have, I've got a lot of pride in our county, in both the citizens, us who've been elected, and those that we've chosen to be the department heads to lead us in the right direction. And, um, I'm taking a lot of comfort in that, knowing that we're gonna get some big boxes checked off that have needed to be checked for many years. Um, some of them are expensive. Building buildings is expensive. Uh, but, you know, they've been sitting there. We've been fortunate with what we've had, for what, where we've been. So, uh, I'm looking forward to things moving forward with this, hearing the public comment, seeing if there's any other ideas from the public as, uh, we have the upcoming hearings, but, um, right now, I, I am nervous going into this.
Thank you, Mr. DeVio. Um, your words were very, uh, very smart by saying that, um, and we understand that. And, um, we're gonna, we're gonna get you comfortable, okay? So try to, anyway. Um, Mr. Pat?
Okay. Well, let me, let me start off by, uh, giving credit where credit is due, and, and that's to Angela and Denise and her staff for once again, uh, bringing to council a very organized and well-thought-out budget process. Uh, and also to Mr. Stamp, uh, and, and Jess, uh, and the county manager's office as well for their input and, and working with the department here. I, I, I must say, but honestly, this was, has been probably one of the more congenial, um, budgetary processes that I have had the pleasure of being a part of. Um, I guess, uh, it takes away stress when you got so much surplus money to work with. Um, but to some of the point that Mr. DeVio was speaking to, um, I knew, and I think so, several of us knew, that these capital expenses were gonna come due and, and, and we were gonna have to stop up and pay for them. I think the way that this budget is set up, yes, there is a large increase, um, but, um, when you look at the operational size, as Mr. Lesher pointed out, less than four percent of the operational, and that's the part that keeps eating, the operational side. So yes, you have a big capital side that you have to pay out. That stops after a period in time. It's the operational size, the dollars and the benefits, that's, um, that's a very modest increase, and I can live with that. I don't know whether that gives Mr. DeVio any more, uh, um, comfort, but to see that that operational number is not a huge number, my, in my point of view, gives me some, some rest. Uh, again, this process was probably one of the more expedient processes we went through. I think we only got together a handful of times. Um, I remember times when we would be back there all night long, beating the table and, and drinking coffee until almost midnight. Um, but, uh, I guess COVID does have its benefits, right? So anyway, um, I just want to say that, um, I'm very pleased with the budget. I believe when I started with this council some many, many years ago, I think we were about sixty-eight million dollar budget, and now we're over a hundred million dollars. But, but it, it's not reckless spending, and, and it's not an increase just for the sake of increase. You know, we had to do some things on, on the capital side that we knew that we were gonna have to pay. Um, we had to do some things on the operational side when it comes to, uh, retention and recruitment and keeping good quality people here. Uh, so, um, this is the price you have to pay to do business in the twenty-first century. So, uh, I think Talbot County is should be, and we'll, we'll hear the comments when they open up a public hearing, but I think Talbot County is should be, um, I'm hope satisfied as to the process that this council went through and paying the things that we had to pay. Again, this is not reckless spending. You know, to, to see the Board of Education at forty-two percent of our budget and a county at, at, uh, forty-three and a county at, at, uh, 43, I don't have that slide in front of me. Probably the closest that I've seen that, those two, those two, um, slices on a pie chart in quite some time. Normally the Board of Ed was around 50% and, and county operations was somewhere around 42, 43%. So to see those numbers evening out a little bit more. Uh, again, if, if you're a county citizen and you want it balanced in those two departments as far as public education spending and, and county operational spending, you got it. So, um, to me it's a win-win. You're paying, you're paying on some capital things that you knew you were going to have to pay on. You're putting investment into your people and on operational side at a very modest, in a very, uh, uh, thoughtful way, frugal way. Um, and, and you're keeping your schools funded at a respectable level. I think it's a win-win across the board for everybody, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Well said. I, I agree with everything that you said. Um, Ms. Price?
You saved me for last on budget comments? Oh, boy.
Well, I, 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 I figured, I figured, you know?
Um, terrifying is a good word. I agree with Mr. DeVio. And I will echo what Mr. Pack said was, you know, I remember my first year on the council when we had to cut a budget and slice and dice, and it was painful because the county had, as Ms. Lane said, in the two years prior, had used $17 million in fund balance. And I remember someone saying that it was a lot easier to do a budget when you're cutting than do a, a, a budget when you're growing. I, I'm not sure I agree with, I agree with that. I think they're both equally challenging. Um, when, because you're deciding on where that growth, you know, where that growth has to go. Um, and I too look at, at what the operating expenses are. And, you know, I know the, what we call the three or four-page summary, which now maybe is five, um, separating out what is capital outlay and really looking at the, the true operating expenses that, that, that do come back. I think that was Tommy Duncan's term, the things that keep on eating, right, Mr. Pack? Um, we're dating ourselves. So we have a lot of that and normally you don't see the school board and the county, you know, at the 42. Really, we had this big, huge chunk this year. Um, but we haven't been able to, to do these items. And the other thing to, to, to rest in is that while we are allocating, I think it was 16 million or something for the capital, those still have to be approved at a later date. This is just authorizing us to do it. But when any project comes up, whether it's next month or in six months or a year, or even if it's the, the following, is, this is really just a, we're setting the table. If something goes wrong, you know, this $20 million that we're transferring, if something goes wrong, God forbid, right? Then we can call that back. We don't actually, this is not approval to spend the money. This is just putting it there, everything goes along, we have the money to do it. We'll, we'll do these projects and there's some that we just have to do. Um, but just, people need to know that any capital spending requires a whole separate uh, bill, uh, to, to truly authorize the, the expenditure of the money. So, um, it's ready to go, but we haven't, you know, spent that yet. So all that's to say is yes, going from 60 million to 112-some million and almost doubling a budget in my time on the council is yes, Mr. DeVio, absolutely terrifying. But it's a, it's a great job and it's all, you know, I'm, I'm being very conservative, but comfortable with where those monies are going. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Um, it means a lot for Ms. Price to get comfortable, that's for sure. So, um, Council, I, I think we've done a phenomenal job. All, all your comments, um, staff, Angela, um, Clay and Jess and, and all the staff that's put this stuff together. Um, everybody has done such a great job. I'm very proud of the way we put this together. Um, you're right, Ms. Price. So even though we've got capital budget, budgets here for, you know, $18 million, that, that doesn't mean we're spending. So, and it's got to be approved. Um, and these, these things, since I've been on council too, have been building up too. So, um, I, I feel pretty comfortable. Mr. DeVio has called me a couple of times with, with some concerns. And I, I think, I, I think we would, all would be human um, if we all wouldn't concern because of what can happen. We're all, we all have businesses, we're all, we're all business people. We're, um, you know, we take all this stuff to heart. So, I mean, we, we really try to do what's beneficial to the county. And, you know, we're building a future, we're building, we're building, um, retention and recruitment. We're, we're keeping people. That, that's what it's about. I mean, if anybody knows how hard it is to keep employees, it's all of us, you know? And, and it's just, it's the nature of what's happening right now with, with, um, the pandemic and, you know, we're all going to recover from this very well, I hope. Um, but, you know, me sitting here as, as president, um, it's a, it's a big lift on my shoulders. And, um, I do appreciate Council's, um, attitude on being open-minded, like Mr. Pack said. Um, you know, we've, we've really, uh, went through this pretty well with a fine-tooth comb. And, you know, the public has to understand, we, we really never really, um, you know, really butted heads on much year, this year. And, and I'm, I'm proud of everybody for doing that. Um, because it was, it was difficult to put together. And, you know, to have, to have Angela, um, by our side in, in, really helps a lot with, with the security of what we're doing here. Um, Angela, I know that, you know, this is one of your last, you know, budgets. Um, you know, and, and we've got a few more months left. And I, I really, really appreciate the dedication and all the hard work that you've done. I think for, I might get the years wrong, but I think you've been with us 18, 19 years. And, um, you know, we're, uh, we're losing the best of the best. Um, and I can't, I can't thank you enough and for, and, and, you know, the, the public don't quite understand the, the dedication that you've put in to, to run this county, and it's a big, big deal. And I, I thank you for everything, um, for helping us, uh, to do all that. And, um, and that goes for your staff too, not, not just you, but your staff. And the only reason I'm tooting your horn is because you're leaving, unfortunately.
That's right. This is my last budget.
I know it, I know it. So I just wanted to toot your horn a little bit on that and, um,
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, you've got some great people behind you and, um, that, that help you too, so.
I kept thinking I'd be in good hands when I leave.
Yep, yep. That's great. So, but, um, let's, let's go ahead. Um, let's see here now. Um, anybody else have anything to say? Um, Mr. Stamp, uh, you have, you have anything for us or?
No, I enjoyed working with the council, putting this budget together. And I think, uh, you know, we, there's strategy wrapped around it. I think it's sound. Um, Ms. Price brought up a, a good point that capital enabling legislation as we pass on capital projects. Um, I think it maintains frugality, uh, in the operating sense and investment in the community at a time where we need to invest in the community to stimulate the economy with our capital improvement program. So I, I think, I think it's a sound budget. I think it maintains frugality for the long run. Um, and it, and again, it's an investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stamp. Okay, so, um, Council, because we're meeting virtually in the environment this evening, and I'm going to ask Madam Secretary to please conduct a roll call to introduce the legislation.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, would you please announce the bill number and the public hearing date and the time of the legislation, please?
Yes, this will be known as Bill Number 1473. And there will be two public hearings. The first one will be on Tuesday, May 4th at 2:00 PM. It will be a virtual public hearing. And the second one will be at 7 o'clock that same evening, Tuesday, May 4th. And it will be in the Easton Elementary School cafeteria. And the Easton Elementary School is located at 307 Glenwood Avenue.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And, um, we'll, we'll, we'll announce that several times and we have to, we have to advertise that. So we'll make sure that everybody is crystal clear on what we're going to be about that. So, okay? All right, Council. Yep. Yep. Thank, thank you, Angela. Appreciate it now. Okay, um, so let's, let's move on. Um, we're still, let's see here now, um, let's move on to public hearing. Okay, um, so we've had a small little change if people are listening. Um, we're going to, um, move, uh, Resolution, uh, 299 30301. We're going to move that down the road for a couple of weeks until we get, um, the, uh, Public Works in, and, uh, Planning Commission. Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Pack. Um, straight on, on taking a look at that. Um, we, we, we jumped the gun, we think a little bit on that, so we apologize. Um, and we want to make sure that, uh, everybody takes a look at that and, uh, gets their input on that. So, um, so, all right, so we're going to do that. So the next thing we, we want to do is we've got, uh, Madam Secretary, um, could you re, please read Bill 1471 in the record, please?
Bill Number 1471, a bill to repeal official zoning map 41 of Talbot County and reenact the same with an amendment changing the zoning district on a portion of tax map 41, parcel 68, remaining lands and lots 1, 2, and 3, consisting of 2.029 acres of land, more or less, from the Village Hamlet V8 zoning district to the Western Rural Conservation WRC zoning district.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Um, okay. I will now open the public hearing on 1471. If you wish to, um, provide comments, um, you know, say your name, where are you from? It will allow you, uh, three minutes to speak or five minutes to speak individually if you're representing a, um, organization. So, um, Parker, do we have anybody on the line?
Uh, we do have one person indicating they wish to speak. Um, they've indicated from the beginning of the meeting, so I, I'm, I'm going to give them an opportunity.
Okay, so, um, caller, are you on here with us? Can you say your name and where you're from, please?
This is caller with a 410-886 telephone number.
Okay. Caller, are you with us?
Um, Mr. Counsel, this is William Anderson. Um, I raised my hand earlier in order to report to the council consideration by the Public Works Advisory Board of Resolution 299. But since that will be deferred, I withdraw my request to speak.
Hey, thanks a lot, Mr. Anderson. I appreciate it and appreciate you listening and hanging in there with us tonight.
Uh, very good. Uh, Mr. Anderson, if you could press asterisk 3 on your phone again, I'd appreciate that. And, uh, we do not have anyone else indicating they wish to speak.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. Okay, thank you. Um, so, um, all right. Okay, I will remind Council that in accordance to the Talbot County Code, a majority of the council is requested to make a site visit, um, on 1441. This bill is eligible for vote on Tuesday, April 20th, April 22nd.
I believe that's 27th, Mr. Callahan.
Yeah, it, it happens. It happens. It's 27. All right, I'm, I'm sorry. Sorry about that, Council. Okay, um, all right, Madam Secretary, okay, could you, we've got one more bill, um, 1472. If you'd put that in the record for us, please?
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Callahan.
I'm sorry.
Um, this is Mrs. Morris. Going back to Bill 1471, I do see that Peter Cotter is on the line. I believe he's the attorney for the applicant and wanted to give him the opportunity to make comment if he wished.
Oh, sure, sure. And what, what was his last name?
It's Peter Cotter.
Mr. Cotter, you, are you, uh, are you, uh, on the phone?
Good evening, Council.
Yes, how are you doing?
Doing well, thank you.
Great, great. So the, the floor is yours.
Well, I, I, I don't, uh, in, in light of the fact that there wasn't any public comment, I don't want to, um, you know, put in more into the record than is necessary. If the council would like to hear, um, the arguments in favor, we're happy to do that. Obviously, there's been a staff report on the issue and such. But, um, I'm really here to answer any questions or to provide any information the council may want on the application. But if there's no request made, I don't feel the need to, uh, provide any information that's not requested.
Yes, sir. Okay, okay, no problem.
We do have another caller. We do have another caller.
We do? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Cotter.
This caller has a 410-886 telephone number.
Okay, caller, um, could you give us your name and, and where you're from, please?
Yes, my name is, uh, Pastor Palmer, I'm the pastor at St. Luke's United Methodist Church in Bellevue, Maryland.
Okay, pastor, yeah. Do, would you like to comment on, on Bill 1471?
Uh, actually, I wanted to, I have a moment for the public comments. I wasn't sure as how to get in at first.
Yeah, yes, sir. So if, if you, if you could, um, if you could hold on, we're, we're, we'll be at that in, you know, 15, 20 minutes, something like that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Stay on the line. Okay, um, so, Madam Secretary, or, or Jess, are we, are we good to, to, to head on to 1472?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, ain't no problem. I appreciate it. And, and Parker, if, if somebody pops on and you need me, just, 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 uh, let me know, okay?
Will do.
Okay, um, Madam Secretary, would you please read 1472 in the record, please?
Bill Number 1472, a bill to amend Chapter 134 of the Talbot County Code Roads Ordinance to authorize the establishment and operation of a roads repurposing facility.
Sounds great. Okay, um, at this time now, we'll open the public hearing on 1472. Um, if you wish to comment or provide comments to 1472, please do, um, with, with your name. Um, I'll give you, I'll give, I'll give the individual, uh, three minutes to talk. And if you're representing somebody, I'll give, uh, or, or an organization, give you five minutes. So, Mr. Dorm, is, is there anybody online for 1472?
There currently is not.
Okay, all right. That sounds great. So, um, okay, so, uh, the, uh, thank you. So the bill is eligible for vote, um, Tuesday, April 27th. Um, Madam Secretary, is that?
Callahan, I, I asked if we closed the public hearing on both 1471 and 1472 at this time.
Okay, thank, thank you. Um, do, Madam Secretary, do I need a, 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 a motion to do that?
I just, you know, requested we close them. Is there any reason to leave them open?
Um, I, I don't, I don't think so. Mr. Pack is, is. Yeah? So, there's a motion to, to close, close the public?
I'm not, I'm not making a motion. I'm just asking that we do close it. I mean, we normally close that then, okay?
Okay, uh, so I'm, I'm assuming we don't have to have a, a vote or nothing. Okay, all right, no problem. All right.
So, um, we had to, in the first one, we got to make sure we have a majority that's done the site visit. But on the 1472, is it not eligible till the next council meeting or is it eligible for a vote tonight?
It's eligible next meeting. Am I correct? Am I correct, Madam Secretary?
We, we can't, we can't move it to third reader?
I, I guess if Council chooses to, they can, yes. I don't see why they couldn't unless there's something I'm not aware of.
I mean, if the council, you know, if Council wants to move this one to third reader and get, take this one off our books this evening, um, I would make a motion to move it to third reader, unless anybody wants more time to think about it.
Well, um, if, if it's, if it's okay with you, Mrs. Price, um, can we hold off to, to the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay, okay, that'd be great. I appreciate that. Okay, let's, uh, let, let's move on. Mr. Stamp, for your. your report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Council President, members of the council. Under county manager report tonight, I have a number of items. The first are board and committee appointments. And the first one, Agriculture Preservation Advisory Board requesting the reappointment of John Swain to the advisory board. Move.
Second.
Madam Secretary, close roll, please.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Next item we have is Airport Board requesting the appointment of Pete Griffin to fill the remainder of William Roll's term set to expire on June 1st, 2021.
So moved.
Madam Secretary, could you call to roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Next item requesting the reappointment of Robert Jump Jr. and Don English to the Board of Electrical Examiners.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
And we are requesting the reappointment of Cory Buxton to the Public Works Advisory Board.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, could you call to roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. That completes the board and committee appointments. The next item I have is Ray Clark, the county director of public works. Our engineer is here with us. The first item is requesting, is requesting Department of Public Works to award a contract for engineering design services for Phase 2 Gold Burn Neck improvements, Mistletoe Hall from Mistletoe Hall Farm Road to Airport Road and Phase 3 Airport Road improvements, which is Gold Burn Neck Road to US Route 50, under bid 1708, and open-ended engineering services. Ray is here to ask for this project and will explain further, and will be available for questions, Ray.
Sure, sure. Counsel, this is, these are design services with Davis-Bonfordale. Primarily, what we're looking to try and do is we have $66,750 to design Airport Road, basically from Centerville Road, US Route 50, back to Goldsboro Net Road, and then $49,500 for Goldsboro Net Road to finish up that section from Mistletoe Hall Farm with these, I guess is the industrial part of the town, to Airport Road. Again, this is to design the road as well as drainage with about 39 feet of pavement. Part of what we're trying to do right now with Airport Road is get the design done, so, and hopefully work with the, work to get it constructed as, I guess, efforts are underway to build some warehouses and whatnot in the eastern technology part.
Thanks, Mr. Clark. Do you foresee the design taking, you know, a couple, two, three months or less than that, or?
We're, yeah, I think at this point, we're trying, after tonight, depending on what happens here, we're trying to set up a design meeting next week, I believe, with Davis-Bonfordale. So we're going to try and fast track, especially Airport Road, as quickly as we can. So, and then try, I think they would like to have it done by September. So, you know, it's going to be tough.
That sounds great. Well, I appreciate all your efforts, and if you could, you know, keep everybody in the loop out there, that's, because it's really important to them out there. That'd be great. Okay, counsel?
Mr. Clark? Mr. Clark, could you remind the council and perhaps the listening public what it means for an open-ended engineering contract?
An open-ended engineering services agreement, we actually went through the process of, I guess, accepting bids from various engineering firms that applied. I'm going to assume we had roughly about five to seven firms that applied. We then went through a ranking process and then awarded three contracts to three engineering firms. We focused on, with the firms, on, let's say, surveying and road construction, surveying and environmental projects, sewer water and sewer work, and then also we hired a firm that actually has architectural services as well in the event we needed architectural services. So we tried to look at firms, you know, both local as well as firms that are outside the area and awarding them based upon, I guess, their qualifications. And ultimately, we then see proposals from those firms that were pre-awarded and basically having them develop scopes and then we did a price and then submit that to you all for award.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. So what I gather from that is that you'll be back to us on specific phases of this project with specific dollar amounts for those engineering and ultimately construction needs?
Yeah, especially for airport as well as for Goldsboro Net Road. Yes, sir, we will be.
Right, thank you very much.
Mr. Callahan, I will make the motion that we go ahead and approve bid 17.08.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you. And counsel, Preston Pepper, our director of recreation parks, came to me. He's having different, he's here with us tonight to discuss this with you. He's having significant difficulty attracting lifeguards to run our pools this summer. I don't think we're alone in that. He's talked with some neighboring jurisdictions and has come up with an idea that we believe may work. He wants to present that to you. It would be entering a full management contract with Coastline Pool Services to operate and maintain both the George Murphy Bay Hundred Community Pools for 2021 at a cost of $192,000. He's, there are sufficient funds in the pool budget at this time to cover that cost. And again, Preston is here and I'd like him to just take a minute and talk to you about that. Preston?
Yes, Preston is joining us by phone this evening, and he's calling user 5, Mr. Host.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can hear you, Preston. Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, so, yeah, like Mr. Stamp had said, we're having significant problems coming up with lifeguards. Right now, we currently only have four for both pools. In talking to some of the other counties are having the same problem. Kent County, for instance, only has seven. They need about 30 to open their pool. I'm not sure if this is a COVID-related issue, if this is just a not having the pool for a couple of years issue. But we would like to see about entering into a contract for a year-by-year commitment with Coastline. We would still supply a front desk attendant, so we still get revenue for this. So this is not like the contract that we had with the YMCA where they did the whole thing. We still get the revenue for swim lessons and the pool admissions and memberships. We still get the revenue. We just don't have to necessarily administer all the expenses that go along with operating the pools. This company would do all the staffing, teach the lessons, maintain chemicals, order chemicals, do that whole thing. So it's kind of a one-stop shop with them.
Okay, so the only nuance with this is that there's not a contract to piggyback on. This would be a sole source procurement, and the justification would be that they're in the area regionally handling other counties that we're connected to, and they do provide a service and are prepared to jump in and provide a service for us for the summer.
That sounds like a wonderful idea. They're ready to jump in and get wet, huh?
Exactly.
Well, I'll make a motion then to go with the contract for that pool company, whatever it's called, whatever the county pool company is called.
Coastline Pool Services. I'll be happy to second it, and I thank Mr. Pepper for looking outside the box to come up with a solution.
Absolutely. Thanks a lot, Preston. I really appreciate you looking after us. Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call to roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Preston.
Yeah, thank you very much, Preston. I'm going to move to, I'll come back for one more. I'm going to move to the next one, which is requesting council approval to apply for and accept emergency rental assistance program grant through the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development amount of $2,439,498. Public County would designate the Neighborhood Service Center as a sub-recipient. I believe Umu is here on behalf of Maryland Deal to answer any questions relative to this ERAP program. Umu, are you on?
Mr. Durham, I see that Ms. Thomas is on. Would you mind unmuting her line, please? Okay, Ms. Thomas, you should be ready to go ahead and speak.
Okay, good evening. Hello?
Good evening, Ms. Thomas. Thank you. You can go ahead and talk. Thank you.
Okay, oh, great. The Neighborhood Service Center is speaking to us this program. This program is really critical because it assists anyone having financial difficulty as a result of COVID-19 with housing needs, energy needs, and other needs that support housing and homelessness prevention.
Thanks a lot, Ms. Thomas, for explaining that to us. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions from council? Okay, Madam Secretary, could you, is there a motion? I'm sorry. Is there a motion? Thank you. Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, could you call to roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price? Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. The next item that we have, Angela, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. I'm going to hand this to Angela. She has much to discuss with you. An item regarding repayment of income tax refunds as it relates to the Wynn case, Angela.
Yes. As many of you are aware, Brian Wynn bought suit against the Maryland State Comptroller's Office, I believe, back in 2009. He challenged the Maryland statute and argued that it violated the Commerce Clause because it burdened Maryland residents that conducted interstate business. Basically, Maryland taxed all of those, all of that income. And over a number of years, this lawsuit went through all of the available legal options and was actually heard at the Supreme Court. But the Supreme Court of the United States did find in favor of Mr. Wynn. I believe that actually happened in 2015. And Talbot County's total obligation to the taxpayers of Talbot County, who had been impacted by this ruling, was $1,788,192. All of these refunds have already been processed by the Comptroller's Office, and now it is time for us to pay the comptroller back. And then legislature has introduced a number of bills related to this. But essentially, we have two repayment options. We can pay the full amount of the county refunds from our May 2021 income tax distribution, or we can pay 1/80th of our, of this amount due in four distributions each fiscal year, starting in May of 2021, going through February of 2041. So each payment would be $22,352.40 or $89,409.60 per year. It seems like, you know, we have the money already set aside. I want to make that clear to council. We had reserved these funds, in fact, more than this, back in 2013 and 2015, as we were going through many layers of lawsuits. And there were many layers of lawsuits, not only about the Wynn case, but then it was how much interest would be repaid to these taxpayers on these funds. So we've had a long, long span of litigation concerning this case. But we do have the fund set aside, so from my perspective, it doesn't really matter. There's a part of me that certainly from ease is we just pay it in November and we're done. Otherwise, we're going to have to adjust all our income tax distributions over the next 20 years for the $22,352 that's going to be withheld from each of those 80 distributions.
Yeah. Let me, which line item is the one, $1.7 million currently sitting in?
It's actually in deferred revenues.
Deferred revenues?
Because we knew we would have to recognize this as an income tax revenue at some point down the road.
Right, and you probably budgeted more than 1.7, I'm assuming.
Yes, we have $3 million in that pot. So.
I would say paid, Miss Callahan.
Decide, part of it will be recognized this year. You know, anything above the 1.7 will recognize this year, and then we will just keep the 1.7 reserved if that's how county wants to, if that's how the council wants to go forward, or we'll recognize the whole $3 million in income in this fiscal year and pay back the $1,788,000 in May.
Everyone, we just pay it.
Okay, okay, counsel. So Mr. Pack is recommending, just go ahead and pay it. Counsel? Are you okay with that?
I support this approach as well.
Ms. Price?
That's fine. You know, it's just probably a hassle to do it the other way around. Just, it's a lot to keep track of.
It is.
Thank you for making sure that it was set aside so that it's an easy decision and that we're not having to pull money out of, you know, current revenues or out of fund balance. It's already, it's already there. So thank you, Ms. Lane.
Right.
Excellent point. Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, we got a motion to second to go ahead and pay this right off. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel.
Next, Mr. Clinton?
Don't go far, Angela.
I'm here.
While you're here, Angela's here to request approval for fourth quarter budget transfers. So go ahead, Angela, please.
Counsel, as you're aware, fourth quarter transfers can only be made with the approval of the county council in the fourth quarter of the year, and these are transfers between agencies and departments of the general fund or between funds. So I have a fairly long document of fourth quarter transfers that I'm proposing to transfer for various line items in the general and recreation funds.
Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. Lane, may I jump in? Because you and I have a little plan. This is the list. It usually takes 15 or 20 minutes to read through, or pretty long. And so if we can get her or Mr. Durham to screen share, she could kind of hit the highlights and we could scroll through this long list, because it, you know, it is dozens and dozens of things. At the end of the day, it all balances out, and it's not more revenue. So if counsel's interested, if we can get that screen share going, people can just view it while she kind of hits the highlights instead of spending the next 15 minutes reading dollars and cents.
I'm okay with that, counsel. I'm okay with that, counsel.
Okay, counsel.
Awesome.
I get, the whole document is three pages. This is the first page. And again, most of these are going to hit, well, virtually all of these, with the exception of one or two departments, are hitting salaries and benefits, because when we started this budget, we did not add any new positions in fiscal '21. We did not do any, we did not have any increases. So all of this has happened during, anything that happened in terms of salary and benefits was, in theory, in our contingency fund. Capital Outlay was all on the county manager's budget. None was in the departments. So we have to, we're now moving these line items into the departments where the expenses are actually going to show up, which is why there are so many this year. Normally, we would have budgeted these items in the departments, but not knowing how our revenues were going to be impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, counsel was very conservative and set these monies aside so they could not be used by departments without your specific approval. And, you know, through the course of the year, council did approve a number of positions, and we did do a step increase for county employees halfway through the year, and capital outlay purchases have been approved through the out the year. And also during the budget process, we actually had some departments that had requested capital outlay items to be purchased in fiscal '22. Council approved those being purchased in fiscal '21. Another reason why salaries look like they're going up significantly is anticipating our health insurance expenses will be higher than what they have been. We also had a bonus pay for our public safety departments, our first responders due to COVID. And while we have grant funding to pay it, the expense still shows up. So that's really sort of a number of reasons why these are, these look like they're very large items, and they, compared to other years, they are because these items were not budgeted in the department during the year. So I don't know if you want me to pick up any specific departments. If you have any questions, I can certainly stop and go through a specific department. The one in the middle of this page that I will touch on is county administration. You'll see the capital outlay in this case is going down by $1.6 million because we are allocating these to other departments now. And again, all those funds are put in the county manager's department, who historically spends no money on capital outlay. Let me go to page two, and you'll see, particularly in our public safety departments, which are on the top half of this page, we have a significant, those are significant numbers. Salary and benefits, all of these departments had significant overtime during this past year. And again, health insurance expenses are going up. Emergency Medical Services, we added positions. Emergency Management Council added positions. So that's reflected in these numbers. Under Emergency Medical Services, the capital outlay, $300,000 of that line item is an ambulance. That was what, which was asked for in fiscal '21, and council did approve that, I believe, in July of 2000 to go ahead and get that purchase because of the lead time on that item. If you go down to Roads Department, we have fairly significant increases in operating expense there, and that is to allow them to do more patching and repairing of roads and resurfacing of roads this year. Because we had level funded them, they didn't really have funds to expand their operations at all. So that will allow them to do additional patching and roadwork. Again, capital outlay, that was equipment that was approved by the council early in the fiscal year. So we're moving the funds to reflect that.
All right. That sounds, that sounds good, Angela. Does counsel have any questions?
Okay. I was going, one more page.
Okay.
Okay, on page three, again, I don't think there's anything too surprising here. The one item I will point out is under Board of Ed. Debt service, we're going down, and that was actually something I discussed earlier, because we hadn't actually, we didn't know what our debt service numbers were going to be when the budget was prepared. We put in, you know, full payment of principal and interest for the full year, and our principal payment, our first principal payment actually won't, isn't due until July 1, which will be in fiscal '22. So that's why that number is decreasing. And reserve for contingencies is decreasing because, again, we had put all these operating expense line items and salary line item, potential expenses in reserve for contingencies. So the total appropriations budget for the general fund, the net change is zero, even though the line items are changing by $35 million. We're moving money around from here, there, and everywhere, but we end up with no net change in terms of the total budget. We are changing our transfer to other funds. We are increasing our transfer to the community center and to the golf course, both to fund capital outlay items that were approved for those departments. So again, their budget, their revenues will increase, and their expenses will increase, but the net impact to their, to the total budget is zero. So those are all of the transfers.
And with that, I will make a motion to approve the fourth quarter transfers.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, could you call a vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye. Ms. Lane, thank you very much. Ms. Morris, is there any way we can, we can post this document up on the county website in case any listener, since Ms. Lane did not go through them line by line as we normally would do, and that was a great suggestion, Mrs. Price. But can we, can we post this document so that taxpayers can look at it as they wish over the next week or two?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Actually, I'll make sure it goes on the budget page of the Finance Department's section of the, of the website.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Ms. Lane.
Thank you, counsel, and thank you for your patience. I only have two more items. It should not be difficult. The next item I have, Dana Newman is here, our director of the Talbot County Library. It's a request from them to, for the council to send a letter of support for the Build America Libraries Act legislation that they would be applying for. Dana, would you like to share with the council a little bit of information about the request? No, this would require no county funds to be associated with the letter of support.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you loud and clear.
Okay. I want to thank the council, first of all, for listening. It's been a long night, and I will try to make my comments brief. The Build America Libraries Act provides $5 billion federally to construct new libraries, to support broadband initiatives connected to libraries, to help libraries with any ADA compliance issues, also to rectify any problems with library building issues as they relate to COVID or other natural disasters. It has been 24 years since libraries have had federal legislation that has supported building projects on the federal level. And I think that the theme tonight has been about investing in communities, and the library is an integral part of the community. I would argue that it's one of the hearts of the community, and, you know, we keep people learning and listening and reading. And I would say that this is a good bill. I mean, I think it will help with taking the burden off of the local governments, because that is really where most of the funding comes from for library construction projects. I know that is a pretty hefty burden on the federal government when a lot of other legislation is being considered for infrastructure projects. But I think that it really is a good investment in local community, and I would ask that the county council support this, mostly because we have an expansion project coming up with the St. Michael's Library. It would help, you know, with the cost of that project if it is enacted at the federal level. So that is really one of the things the library always looks to do is try to find other sources of revenue, and I think this would provide a good amount of revenue for that project and help us to, to come into compliance with some ADA issues that we're having there, but also to buy some Wi-Fi hotspots, additional Wi-Fi hotspots to circulate to the public. So that funding could also be used in addition to the new construction for the St. Michael's Library. There are other projects we could use that funding for.
Thank you, Dana. So counsel, there you go. We're just requesting your consideration to send a letter of support.
I'll make the motion. We send a letter of support for the Build America Libraries Act.
Second.
And we got a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye. And I'm happy to report, this will be the last item on the county manager report. I'm requesting your consideration to support a grant application by the DeShields family for the FY '21 Maryland Heritage Area Authority Grant in the amount of $100,000 for the Bellevue Passage Museum. If the grant funds are awarded, they will be managed by the Midshore Community Foundation. There will be no county funds required. This is just a letter of support for their effort to do this project.
Yeah, if I could add, if I could add, Mr. Sam, I got, Mr. Dr. DeShields has sent me this letter about a week ago, asking for council support on this Maryland Heritage Area Grant. They're looking to do some rehabilitation of some of the historic properties down in Bellevue area. Many council may know that Bellevue at one time was a very industrious area when it came to seafood industry. Several black-owned businesses were operating out of Bellevue. The Turner Seafood Industry is one of them that comes to mind. I remember visiting Bellevue, the church there, St. Luke's Church, many, many years ago, and saw a lot of the historic pictures that they had of the seafood industry during its heyday. So a lot of time consideration has gone into trying to revitalize this area and to memorialize the history there in Bellevue. I know that's a very, very short turnaround time for this grant. I believe it's, I think it's tomorrow, right? The 14th, Mr. Sam? I think it's the 14th. Yeah, so I would ask for council's consideration this evening. Okay, counsel.
Mr. President, as before with Maryland Heritage Area's authority, letters of support, I will, I'll recuse myself on this. The governor has appointed me to the MHAA, and I, I'll, I'll reserve my vote for that body so that I'm not sort of petitioning myself, as it were, on this, on this letter of support.
Thanks a lot, Mr. Lusher. Appreciate you letting us know that. So counsel, I need a motion in a second. I'll make the motion for a letter of support, Mr. Callahan.
I'd be happy to second it. I just asked Mr. Pack if you could forward that letter around. I'd like to read the letter, if you could.
Ms., I thought Ms. Morris sent it out, but Ms. Morris, have you forwarded that letter out? I thought we did that already.
It was placed in Granicus earlier.
I thought it was. Check Granicus, Mr. DeVio. It should be in Granicus.
And if you can't, just let me know. We'll send you that right away.
We got a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher? Oh, sorry. Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye. Mr. Counsel, President, members of the council, as always, I thank you for your leadership and support, and this completes the county manager report for this week.
Great, Mr. Sam. Appreciate it. Good job. And let's move on to public comments. Mr. Dorm, do we have, do we have anybody online?
Okay, our first caller is the pastor from St. Luke's. I'll unmute him.
No problem. Pastor, could you, could you go ahead and, you're, you're online.
Okay, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I wanted to voice my, my support for the DeShields family and their efforts down in Bellevue. And I was also, I was also impressed with the resolution for the Sexual Assault Awareness Month for April 2020, 2021. But I was a little confused with that because the resolution said we're going to speak out and take action in support of awareness and prevention. But at the same time, it's my understanding that members of the, of the council have been in support of maintaining a symbol of human trafficking and the rape and exploitation of women and children, and that is the Talbot Boys Monument. If you're going to say this in a resolution, then why have a statue that says to those very same people who were human trafficked, who were raped and exploited, that you will get no justice here in Talbot County based on the fact that we are letting you know that our courthouse is supportive of the traditions and the history of sex, of sex trafficking, human trafficking, and sexual assault. And so I would, I would say that if you're going to pass a resolution for such, then the action would also need to be taken in regards to removal of the Talbot Boys from the courthouse lawn. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for your comments and input. I appreciate it. Next caller?
Okay, our next caller is an 845-788 number. Caller, could you begin?
Caller, could you give us her name and where you're from, please?
Hi, this is Eliza Connor. I'm calling from Easton.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Connor.
Okay, hi. Thank you all so much for the time to be heard, and I know it's been a long night. I really appreciate the diligence and the commitment you have to serving our community. And I'm here tonight to express my explicit support for our community's call to move the Talbot Boys Monument from the courthouse lawn. I also really appreciate the pastor's comment just now reflecting on the dissonance really between so much of what I've heard tonight regarding what you all on the council's support and the continued effort to maintain and uphold this symbol of violence and oppression on the county courthouse lawn. So one of the other things I heard tonight was the emphasis on public safety featured in tonight's proposal for fiscal year 2022. And I'm asking you to please lift up your leadership, to open your minds and widen your heart to consider the very painful and visceral impact this statue plays on the psychological safety of our community members and the negative, deeply negative impact it has on the present day narratives that they are living out. So I might specifically speak to council member Price, council member Callahan, and council member DeVio. I'm asking the three of you to please reflect on how your potential personal fear of change and the possible attachment to your personal opinion is getting in the way of your ability to best represent the mental, spiritual, and physical well-being of your constituents. Please move the Talbot County, the Talbot Boys statue from our county courthouse lawn.
Thank you, Ms. Connor. I appreciate you calling in and giving your thoughts tonight. I appreciate you staying on and listening.
Thank you.
We have no other callers at this time?
No other callers. So if we'd be, we'd be glad to listen to, if, just, just let us know. We're going to do council comments now. So, you know, if somebody
We're going to do, uh, council comments now, so, you know, if, uh, somebody calls in, just, just let, just, just let me know, okay? Mr. Dorm, that'd be great. Okay, um, so let's move on to council comments. Uh, Mr. Vice President? Mr. Lesher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I was tuned into the, uh, the Talbot County Private Sector, uh, call on, on COVID conducted by, uh, Emergency Operations and, uh, and also with, uh, our, uh, tourism director Cassandra Van Hoosers, uh, uh, support and involvement. Uh, the COVID update shows that our, our seven-day positivity average is significantly above where we were just a month ago. And although Talbot County leads the state in vaccination rates, uh, 47.5% have had either their first dose of a two-dose regime or the, or the single-dose vaccine, 30, not 3.9%, over a third of us, have had a second dose or the single vaccine. Despite those really encouraging, uh, numbers, we heard a note, we heard notes of caution. Uh, we are still a long way from herd immunity. Uh, almost one out of three tests from our area that are genetically sequenced, and that's a small number of them, are showing the B117 variant, the more highly transmissible coronavirus uh, ver, version that originally emerged in the UK. It's here. It's local. Um, we need to continue to exercise our prudent measures and follow the governor's orders until we achieve much higher vaccination rates, uh, to achieve that herd, herd immunity. We saw the impact, uh, of the hold on the single-dose vaccine with the cancellation of the FEMA clinic here in Talbot County this week. Um, and, and certainly that's going to slow things down. I would encourage those who can to seek vaccinations at one of the mass, uh, clinic sites, uh, the closest of which is in Salisbury. Uh, you can get appointments. They are not age-restricted. Anybody over the age of 16 can now do that. Um, this is how we can, uh, if we comply, this is, this is how we can, fully reopen our economy and make sure that that day arrives sooner. And we all recognize the economic importance of how important that is, as well as really saving the lives and protecting the health of our Talbot County citizens. Uh, we, we have gotten to the point where it, it seems that, that vaccine supply is, has finally caught up with vaccine demand. We will soon see us going in the other direction where it will be hard to get those next batches of doses and identify the people who, uh, who need to get them. Um, so please do your part and get out and get your vaccination. It's important to all of us in the economic future in the near term of Talbot County.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Well said. Um, Mrs. Price?
I am going to bless you all and say, "Good night." No comment.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Uh, Mr. DeVio?
So I hope I don't steal your thunder. I was just going to address the blessing of the boats that we went to down in Tillman, um, which is a partially correct title for it. It was actually a blessing of all the watermen who were down there as well. If you don't know, there was a life saved in February. A gentleman went overboard from Queen Anne's County on one of our creeks. And if you know our rivers, it's not very easy to just say, "Yeah, it's that boat over there." It's not a car accident with a car on the side of the road that's in flames. It's, takes a lot of coordination to get on the water and to an individual who is underwater in freezing temperatures. Uh, there was a lot of radio communication between the local watermen from Tillman and from Talbot County, getting that radio onto, getting that boat onto the right channel so that help could get there. And the coordination could not have been better of just individuals. There were emergency responders as well, but when you see individuals running to their dock, to their boat, to go out and rescue a fellow waterman that they don't know, that's not from this area, uh, it, it was, it really was a nice blessing. Uh, it really warmed my heart to see a community that no questions were ever asked other than, "What can we do and how can we respond?" Um, and I, it's, when you look at all the watermen, when you look at the seafood, the crabs that are on the tables in Baltimore, you travel around the country and get a, you know, Chesapeake Bay blue crab, tho, those are our folks here, uh, and those are individuals who do this every day and out in the roughest conditions. They're bringing dollars back to Talbot County, and they're looking out for one another. And I, I'm glad that we've got a great council that looks out for them. And, uh, so I, I appreciate being invited down to that and getting to learn how close-knit that community is again. And I, I had forgotten about that, so. I do appreciate them because that could have been a recreational boater. They could have been a sailor. They could have been anybody's family out there. It didn't have to be a waterman that they saved. They could have been anybody. Uh, and we're, we're very fortunate with some great individuals and a great community who do, does look out for one another. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVio. That was some very kind words, and I, I agree. Um, Mr. Pat?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Callahan. I just want to expand upon, uh, where Mr. Lesher, uh, left off regarding vaccinations here in the county. Uh, and I, and I want to do so from the standpoint of equity and making sure that, um, we, uh, reach, uh, those populations in the county that, um, are, are not going out and getting vaccinated in large enough numbers. Um, an Equity Task Force was placed together with Nancy Andrews as our chairperson to work along with Dr. McGuire from our health office, um, in reaching into, uh, these communities of color here in Talbot County to make sure that we address the barriers, um, that may present to them as to why they are not going out and getting vaccinated. Um, right now, Talbot County is trending below the average, the state average when it comes to, um, African-American citizens being vaccinated. Well, also, we're also trending below the state average when it comes to our Hispanic citizens, um, being vaccinated. So this task force is meeting, uh, to try to overcome some of those barriers. We know some of it, uh, is based on some, some systemic and historical, uh, tributation that some, some people may have towards vaccination. Uh, we understand that some, some of the hesitation may be, or some of the barriers may be, um, uh, because of technology or transportation. Uh, so the, the task force is trying to, uh, address those barriers and reach out into those communities and get people vaccinated, um, so we can all, um, be healthier uh, across all sectors here in Talbot County. Um, I do want to give a shout out, uh, uh, to BAM. Uh, they did a vaccination on Saturday. Uh, I think some over, some 100 citizens were vaccinated down at the BAM Center. Also Trinity Cathedral did a vaccination. Um, and I know the Singer Center, I believe, is scheduling for that vaccination. If it didn't take place this week already, it's taking place later this week. The date, uh, just eludes me right now. So hats off to, um, uh, Chaldeen Brooks and her, her staff over there for, uh, working, uh, to get a vaccination clinic operating at our Singer Center. We're also looking at, uh, working into St. Michael's, uh, with Chief Smith, um, and the Singer Cent, and the Community Center there in St. Michael's, uh, as well as Union United Methodist Church, uh, to, uh, get vac, get persons vaccinated in the Bay 100 area, in the Bay 100 area, um, as well as other areas in the county. So, um, this is a continued effort. We want to reach into all sectors of, of the population and get people vaccinated because the quicker we get to herd immunity, the safer we're all going to be. So I just wanted to pass that on to the citizens so who are out there. If you haven't been vaccinated and you need to, please go onto, uh, the emergency services website and get that vaccination information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pat. I, I appreciate those, uh, educational words and kind words. Um, and, um, I, I will comment on that, too. Um, so if, if there are, if, if you are, if you do need help, um, in vaccination, please give us a call so we can help you. It is, it is important, um, to, to get vaccinated, um, a, at this point. And, um, it seems like it's, um, uh, it's available. It's getting better and better each week. And emergency services in the Health Department are working, um, fiercely, um, trying to make it work. And, you know, council and, and Cory is doing a great job, um, in, uh, managing, you know, a lot of this stuff that comes to us every week. Um, and it's a lot of work. Um, Mr. Stamp does a great job, his staff, his team, um, his departments. Um, they got, they have to be committed to doing all this stuff. Um, so it, it is, it is really getting better, but you, like, like, uh, Vice President, uh, Lesher said, "We can't, we really can't let our guards down." Because once you let your guards down, it's, it's going to get you. So, um, you need some help, just let us know. Um, I, I would end it on what Mr. DeVio said. Um, Mr. DeVio, myself, and Mr. Lesher, we're, we're at the, um, the Blessing of the Fleet. Um, that probably, that, that, that day, um, that situation was one of the best situations since I've been on the council and actually physically seen a miracle happen. Um, I, I get chills even thinking about it. What people don't understand what the miracle was is this gentleman, um, was on his, on his boat, slipped on his boat, slipped, slipped on his deck, fell overboard. His mate could not lift him up. So he was right beside the boat for about 25 to 30 minutes, right beside the boat, and couldn't pull him up. It was a miracle that they put everything, everything in motion and got this man out. Um, and it, in, 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 in about 30 minutes, and he lived. Um, could, could you, could you just sit here and imagine being right beside your moat with your mate looking that, looking at you? And you couldn't, and you couldn't pull him up, or you couldn't get up, and you froze? I, I, I couldn't believe it. I, I couldn't believe it. But Phil, I, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but man, just to see him and his daughter sitting there, the me, the miracle that, that happened, that this man get, was, was given a second chance, it, it was phenomenal. It almost made me, you know, tear up a little bit because it was, it was a big deal. Um, and that's, and, and, you know, let, let's face it, the Blessing of the Boats made that happen. You know, I, I really truly believe that. It was one of the best moments in, in my, uh, little career here for being on council was, was really, um, touching. And, and Mr. uh, Lesher, the Vice President, standing up there, giving these awards out, and me having him there, and Mr. DeVio beside us, I really felt a part of this, and it was great. Um, Mr. Pat, I, I really appreciate, you know, you, you've done it for many years, too. Um, and I wish you and, and, and Mrs. Price were there just to get the whole, the whole feeling and vibes of, of that blessing because it, it was, it was pretty awesome. And, um, I, I was really glad to be a part of it. It's one of the few moments that, uh, I think, uh, was very touching, that's for sure. And, and, and not to get all wishy, but the Lord was there, that's for sure, you know? So, being that said, uh, Mr. Lesher, Mr. Vice President, you want to bring us on home, buddy?
Yes, indeed.
Okay.
The, uh, council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 27th, beginning at 6 o'clock PM. The council will be convening an open session at 4:30 PM and immediately adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Uh, therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as noted?
Aye. May I, counsel? All good.
Good.
Night, night.
Good. Right, right. Madam Secretary, can you call the, can you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price? Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Good night. Thanks a lot, counsel. Good job tonight. Good job.